Madam Clerk, if you'll call the row.
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt. Commissioner Kayler.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. Commissioner Galt, we think will be here shortly, we hope.
No, she won't.
She will not. She called in. Sorry, she will not be here. Okay. All right, we have Chaplain Preston Figgy to come tonight to give our invocation. Chaplain, it's good to have you with us tonight. Appreciate you doing this. We will stand and hear the invocation, and then I'd like to ask Commissioner Watkins to do the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the dedication and commitment of the mayor and the commissioners. We know it takes a great deal of effort and time to serve the public. Pray that your Holy Spirit would be here tonight and in all the proceedings. Pray that you would provide wisdom and guidance. Help them as in their deliberations to avoid the temptations that faced your son. Help them not to wield power for power's sake. Help them not to use position for personal gain or attention. And help them not to do the popular thing, but to strive to do the right thing. Give them clear minds, servant hearts, and guide them in all things, and we ask that your will be done in all things and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Major, any additions or deletions?
Other than Presentation B that's been struck, I think we're on course with what we have.
Okay, I would just like to make a couple comments before I get on with the program. Number one, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the new mayor, Mayor Kayler, and the city commissioners. City Commissioner Richard Abraham, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
And to Carol Galt, congratulations to Representative Gerald Watkins.
Thank you, sir. I'm honored.
On his race. And congratulations to Sandra Wilson and Alan Rhodes.
Come up.
All right, you want to do somersaults as they come up? Yeah, come on up. If you come to the podium...
We got a couple of extra chairs here.
Swear 'em in real quick and let 'em vote.
We got a couple of extra chairs, y'all.
Alan and Sandra, congratulations, and we wish you all the luck going forward. Any comments for the good of the group?
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here. All right.
I appreciate the support of you all to allow, invite us to be here tonight, and then the voters of the city of Paducah to put their faith in us, so looking forward to serving.
Great, great. Well, thank you, and I'll just say that I might be a little prejudiced in this comment, but I think the voters sent a message that they were happy with the direction that the city's going in with the slate of officers that they elected. There were no, in my opinion, anti-candidates that were elected, and so I think that was a referendum that the city is going in the right direction, and they want the city to continue. So I wish you all luck in the years ahead.
If I could just add to that, Mayor, I think you're going to have an excellent commission here. Paducah's going to be represented very well with the new mayor and this commission. It's diverse, it's very intelligent, great leadership, and I look forward to watching y'all guys in action. I'll miss it. I've had a great, great time being a Paducah City Commissioner, and the city employees are like one big family, but I appreciate the opportunity to do something different at state level, but you're going to have a good time as a city commissioner, and we look forward to it.
That's good.
And we look forward to visiting with you, Gerald and Frank.
We'll be talking.
A lot of it. Telling you what we need in Paducah.
Door will be open, yes.
Thank you all. The other thing I want to say is that Mayor Alleghale Kayler and I will be speaking to the chamber Friday morning at their meeting, and I'm going to tell them that the merger vote is over. It was defeated soundly, and it's time to move on. I think the city has to continue on doing what it feels likes best for the city's interest, and so does county. The city is strong, strong financially. It's strong from a leadership standpoint with the mayor and the new commissioners, with Jeff Peterson, our city manager, and with our department heads. So the city of Paducah is going to be fine moving forward. A good credit rating, a good budget, and we'll be fine. The county will be fine, but it's time to quit the division, and it's not the time to keep bringing it up. It's time for healing and to let both the city and the county continue and run their separate shops. So hopefully that will happen, and I know it will because Paducah-McCraken County has always been good at coming together, but that's what I intend to relay to the city commission in my remarks. Okay, we have a very exciting presentation this morning, this afternoon, evening with the Paducah Art School. This is something that we had the groundbreaking several weeks ago. It is a vision. It's something that this commission has hoped for for many years, and that is the start of an art school in our lower town, in our downtown area. So without further ado, I would like to ask Dr. Vezie to come forward, if she would. Good to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. I know that most of you were at the groundbreaking, and that was on October 25th. So we had these boards available that afternoon, and I would ask that you let me just explain where we are in the process, because I was at your retreat last year, and the city commission and mayor, thank you so much for your support at that time, that you pledged $75,000 per year toward the operation of this facility, and we were still keeping the downtown facility. So I'm here to give you more or less an update and ask your assistance. When I showed the preliminary drawings last year, they were not to this extent, but I did talk about our purchase of Madison Hall and the intent to renovate Madison Hall for ceramics. If you have driven by, you will see that, and if you were there on October 25th and you went inside, you would see that we've done extensive renovations to that facility. It will be something that this community will take a great deal of pride in as we have ceramic students in that facility starting in January, which is what I pledged to you that I would do. January 2013, that facility will be open, and classes will be held in Madison Hall. We had the groundbreaking for the sculpture building, which is the one with the blue front, and that is going to occur. The money is there, and construction, and that bid will be awarded December the 11th. We've had the, one of the first diversity meetings to allow diverse contractors in the state to view the drawings. So the bid will be awarded December the 11th. Construction will then start, and that facility will open for sculpture students in January 2014. The other board that you see has Madison Hall, the sculpture building, and in the pickle factory site, which has been deeded to Paducah Junior College, the foundation for the college. That is the site for the proposed 2D design building. That is proposed at 22,000 square feet, and I am in the process of starting the campaign to raise the initial $2 million for funding. And then, as you heard, on October 25th, Dr. McCall, President of the Kentucky Community and Technical College System and KCTCS, have pledged their support in completing that project. So we, at this time, just at this time, if we walked down and took classes in that, on those facilities, we would have 150 students that are in studio classes, in studio classes in those facilities, plus the students that we have in Intro to Art and Art History classes. So it is very much, I believe, on target for being a true asset to this community and revitalization of Lower Town and keep that progress towards the arts community growing. So at that time, when I met with you, I asked for a commitment of three years. I am asking if the commission would consider extending that by two years, and one of my major reasons is that we need legislative support to continue this project onto the pickle factory site. I had budgetary authority for only $5 million. That would include Madison Hall and the sculpture building. To go beyond that amount, I will need legislative approval, budgetary authority. Gerald, if the legislature opens the budget in 2013 and they award any money, certainly don't forget that this is one of the primary building or construction projects of the Kentucky Community and Technical College System, but if, and we know the economic condition that the state is in, the nation's in, I am requesting for the college budgetary authority only. We would spend other funds. So it is important for me to be able to say that I have support for operational dollars, part of the operational dollars for this facility, because those of you who went with me to Frankfurt last year remember that that's the very first question I was asked. Are you going to have the operational dollars, and you don't expect to come back to the state and ask for those? So I think it would be very important to have your support, because it's always been a project that was the community college, the city of Paducah, and Paducah Junior College, our foundation. So that's what I respectfully ask of you this evening, if you would consider extending it for two more years.
Okay, questions?
Well, Dr. Vezie, I certainly believe and support the idea of you having budgetary authority to be able to bond projects that are worthwhile, and hopefully we can make that happen at some point. And I hope to be able to get on the education committee. It looks very promising that I will be, so we'll be in a position to try to be helpful at the state level. And certainly, I'm very supportive at the local level here. I think the art school is vital to the importance and the growth of the arts community in Lower Town and downtown, the spillover, and it has grown considerably since you've started it in Lower Town, and certainly worthy of our support, and I hope we can continue that.
Thank you.
And I certainly agree that the art school is a large economic driver, as well as increasing the awareness of art in this community and the importance of art in this community, because that does put us on the map, and it grows the community. And we will have to, you know, I support it in theory, certainly. We'll have to look at our budget, you know, of course.
Certainly.
But, you know, if we can make it happen, we will.
Mr. Abraham?
Totally support the art school, and if there's any way that we can extend that, I think, I'm pretty sure we'll do that.
I appreciate that. This is several million investment that the college is making, and I appreciate your support and feel the partnership that we have traveled down this path to support this project. So I do thank you, and I'm certainly open to any other questions that you might have.
Dr. Vezie, how many years are we into the three-year commitment?
This is our second.
Second year, okay.
I've got a question. We've got Lisa Thompson here from PRA. What is the timetable for use of the buildings downtown? Of course, I would imagine Lisa would want to know that. Is that too early to kind of determine it?
Well, what is happening, we are also in the process of doing, they're not major renovations downtown, but we are renovating that space, because we are, if you visited the art school today, we're, you know, with this many students, we're totally out of space. So we're renovating downtown to some degree. You're looking, we could not leave downtown until, you're looking at 2015 or so, before we could actually complete, if we had authority to spend in 2013. By the time you designed the project, and it would take a good year to build that facility. So we're looking at another good three years.
And who knows, if you have, if you have the growth that continues like you've had, you still might need one or more of those buildings downtown, possibly.
Well, we're keeping, you know, we still have kitchens.
Yeah.
And we're not abandoning that idea. Certainly, we're open to any, anything that comes up, but, you know, I think if you just say, well, we could go down there right now with 150 students, that's a lot of students in that area.
Yeah.
And of course, the classes are not all at one time. They're staggered, and that's good. But it's, it's just a wonderful project, and for us to be able to continue without state dollars coming directly into this project, I'm very pleased of our ability to do that.
I do have another question. The painting, well, that, now, this is 3D.
Painting, the, the painting will remain, drawing, painting will remain downtown. That's what will remain downtown.
Even after all this is finished?
Yes. Well, the new building would be painting and drawing.
3D.
Ceramics will be in Madison Hall. The building to the right of Madison is sculpture. 2D, painting, drawing, digital photography will be in the pickle factory site when it's completed, and we would like to bring graphic design into this program as well. That will be a huge increase in enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Dr. Vezie, this is exciting. Sandra and Alan, this will be something that'll, I think, eventually transform downtown and Lower Town. It is something that we've been dreaming of, and Dr. Vezie, you have made it a reality, and so we appreciate that very much, and I will do all I can to support this in my position as retiree.
Well, you've done a great job so far, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Good partnership.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
I would just add that I think the Paducah School of Art is just one of several different aspects of this community that make it attractive to potential employers, and we're on the verge of just really having some explosive growth when just they announce a 450-employee company that's going to locate here, and these are the kind of things that help attract employers to the Paducah area, so.
I bought into the vision a long time ago, and...
Through your personal investment, as well as...
You bought into it, like, a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vezie. John, it's good to have you here tonight, too. Yeah. Okay, Richard, Barclay Regional Airport.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Peterson, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with a briefing of the last seven or eight months since I've been down here on the activities at the airport, because it's rather kind of interesting times out there right now. As you know, our scheduled airline service is provided by SkyWest Airlines, flying as a United Express operator. Interestingly enough, SkyWest, which operates no services in their own name, under their own name, is the seventh largest airline in the United States. They're sizable. They fly for American, Delta, United, and US Airways. Their fleet is about 450 aircraft. SkyWest also owns Express Jet, SkyWest Holdings, rather, so the two carriers under SkyWest Holding probably carry about 45 million passengers a year and have a combined fleet of almost 900 aircraft. So it is a sizable operation. Interestingly enough, Mayor, after you had contacted me a couple of months back when you had a rough night in Chicago, I checked some data, and so far this year, the reliability rate is 98.6 percent. One-half of 1 percent of cancellations were controllable factors, i.e. a mechanical problem, a crew issue. Nine-tenths of 1 percent were uncontrollable, which would be air traffic control in the Chicago area or weather, but that leaves us at 1.4 percent total in terms of problem area, and that's a very low percentage. It's interesting what's happened to us since SkyWest began Chicago service. We are up 15 and 1/2 percent so far from January 1st compared to the same time period last year. We're up 6.7 percent over our forecast, so that's a good indication right there. In November alone, through the 12th, we're up 19.2 percent. And interestingly enough, nationwide, domestic ticket sales have been dropping since August, and of course, they did take a big hit the last part of October and the first part of November because of Sandy. But Sandy also has an equal impact on us. Let a good norwester go up the coast, and we can see 25 percent of our traffic disappear in one day. The east coast just shuts down. In any case, we're looking at last Thursday, we passed SkyWest's internal passenger forecast for the entire year. Tomorrow, we will pass last year's total traffic count, and at the end of the first week in December, we'll pass what we had generated for our own forecast. And that's really pretty good. We think probably by about December 31st, it's going to come out to be a little over 40,000 originating and destination passengers, which is a good number. We haven't seen that for some time. There's a firm under contract to FAA known as Mead Hunt. It's a consulting firm. You may have heard of them, and one of the things they do is a traffic and fare analysis for FAA. On the second quarter, calendar quarter of the year ending June 30th, which is the most recent data available, and these are the southern region airports, which is Kentucky, down through Tennessee, Mississippi, on over through the Carolinas, Georgia, Florida, and Puerto Rico, the average fare for Paducah was $171 compared to $186 a year ago. The southern region average is $180, so we're sitting there right now, $9 under the average of those 74 airports, and that's a good place to be. So they have found a sweet spot on the Chicago fare, which apparently is doing them a considerable amount of good. Now, I would like to spend just a couple of minutes on some issues that are going to be facing us, and these are issues over which we have little, if any, control, but they do have a tremendous impact on our ability to sustain business levels as they are. First one is sequestration. What's going to happen? We don't know. Grants available through the trust fund for airport development may be affected. That's an unknown. We don't know what's going to happen to essential air service, which is of a, you know, a real genuine concern here. The other thing that has happened is since 1992, correction, 2002, FAA grants have been parceled out at a 95 percent basis for the state and the local airport sponsor to split the remaining 5 percent. That meant a $1 million project, I had to scrounge up $25,000 in local money to complete the project. Last fall, Congress reverted back to a 90 percent payout schedule, and the state, due to budget constraints, is not participating at all. So now, if I have a $1 million project, instead of $25,000 I need to come up with, it's $100,000, and that's been kind of a tough blow. We don't know at what point that's going to be reversed from the legislative viewpoint, and given sequestration, the federal budget issues as well as state issues, that may or may not happen. The other thing that is interesting is that the airline industry, for the first time in 85 years, has reached a maturity level. There is simply now a disconnect between gross domestic product and passenger generation and demand. Always before, up to this point, they've been stair-stepped. Good years in the economy, passengers went up. Bad years, they went down. Now there's a maturity disconnect. The industry does not have a lot of room in which to grow, and this can create all kinds of little disparity figures. It's interesting to note that it actually results in less competition, in that we used to have 11 major legacy airlines, and now we're down to basically four through mergers. And where 11 legacy airlines had hubs spread throughout the country at one point, totaling over 65 hubs, the number is now down about half of that. So the carriers are no longer interested in market share. They're interested in profitable routes. It either turns money or it does not. So as a result, cities have seen a consolidation of services. Evansville, for instance, had service in numerous directions with Northwest and Delta. Given the post-merger, Delta terminated services to two markets. We've seen the same thing happen here, where St. Louis was not sustainable anymore because American effectively de-hubbed TWA's 400 flights a day down to 36. So we've seen that happen. That affects us locally. We have, of course, the concerns in the industry, fuel cost being one, the inability to adequately price their product being another issue, lack of passenger growth, and now it looks like next year, possibilities of being a pilot shortage. So these are all things that are going to make regional feed really fragile, and we're going to do our best to stay on top of it. We don't know what the ultimate outcome will be for essential air service. So we're in a unique position. We have the second-largest hub in the United States. Our usual hubs of St. Louis, Louisville, Cincinnati, Memphis, and Nashville now have either declined under hub status to emphasis cities or no longer offer the appropriate level of service. Delta, within 18 months, has chopped 200 flights a day out of Memphis, so that would no longer be sustainable for us as a hub. Our short-term goal are to increase the number of passengers to try to get us off essential air service subsidy, since we don't know the outcome of that system, and then to generate enough passengers to see a third flight get back into the system. So, so far, the future is relatively bright compared to those around us, but we have these things over which we have no control. I'd be pleased to take any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Richard, how many more passengers per year would it take to where you wouldn't have to have the subsidy, or would cover the subsidy you're getting?
You know, that's kind of a, hate to say it, a floating number, because it depends on what today's fuel prices are, as to how bad that is. The fuel pricing is now about 40 percent of SkyWest's operating cost. At this point, my judgment would be it would take approximately 20 more passengers per day, 10 per flight. And from where we were when we started with SkyWest to where we could see getting off subsidy, we're probably halfway there, and that would also be toward the point of the third flight. So we'll have to just see how that materializes out.
It certainly was a good decision going to Chicago, wasn't it?
It is considering what's happened to St. Louis, Memphis, Nashville, and Cincinnati, because it's, that has hampered us in a way of trying to solicit additional service, because if someone were to come in with an inferior product, which would be maybe a 19-seat aircraft, and decide to hook us back up with Memphis, possibly with Delta, and that would be a cheaper proposition for EAS subsidy than SkyWest, we could stand the possibility of losing the Chicago service, and that would be a definite no-no. It's interesting, 10 percent of our passengers are now local-market Chicago. 10 percent of our passengers are now international. If you want to go to Tokyo out of Nashville, you have to go somewhere else first, probably Chicago. So we're attracting a considerable number of international passengers. It's just not easy to do it out of anywhere else anymore.
Mayor Kayler, question?
No.
Well, thank you, and I'm pleased to provide you with a copy of our just-completed audit for fiscal year 12. It's unqualified, no question to cost, no discrepancies.
The only question I have is, you would go to a third flight with SkyWest... The only question I have is, you would go to a third flight with SkyWest before you went to a second airline, correct?
Correct. It's not that, uh, we're opposed at all to a second airline if one comes knocking on the door, but under federal law, we almost have to admit. But it's the issue of the amount of investment a carrier has to make, and you can't very well make that on less than two flights a day. Uh, SkyWest probably has a couple of hundred thousand dollars' worth of ramp equipment sitting out at that airport now.
Right.
That's an expensive proposition.
Right. Could there be any more than three flights by SkyWest in a day?
There could be, but that's assuming that, uh, the fifty-seat regional jets are going to stay in the market for a while. And if that's the case, and the current break-even will be somewhere in the high seventy percent, for three flights, we're going to be needing, uh, right at probably about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty passengers per day. For four flights, that would jack it on up to about a hundred and sixty passengers per day, and that is relatively a lot of folks.
Yeah. Okay, well, good job, and, uh, keep up the good work. Thank you, Richard.
Oh, would, uh, anytime any of you would like to come out for a visit, we're proud of what we're doing on the terminal roof, front of the building, and, uh, our six-mile new critter fence.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have Julie Harris, uh, to talk about the dragon races. Julie, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to come tonight to thank the city and, uh, for their support of the first, uh, ever Paducah Dragon Boat Festival that we held in September. Um, I also wanted to let you know what a huge success the event was and what an impact it has had on our community. When I learned about dragon boat racing events, I thought it was a great fit for Paducah. Paducah has long needed an event on the river, and who better to host it than the River Discovery Center? Dragon Boat Racing is sweeping North America, and it has quickly become the fastest-growing team sport in the U.S. Little did I know that it would sweep Paducah like it did. When I began presenting the idea to companies for sponsorship and participation, I quickly saw I had hit on something big. The business community jumped at the chance to participate. Not only could companies support the educational programs of the River Discovery Center, but they could also offer their employees an opportunity to participate in a great team-building activity that also promoted healthy living. And we were so excited that other nonprofits, like Project AIDS Orphan, the Yizer Arts Center, and the Kentucky Thoroughbreds, made up of breast cancer survivors, could be a part of our fundraiser, too. There were a total of twenty-six teams in the races. According to the organization that hosts the same event in Cincinnati, we far surpassed most first-year racing events. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the city for its support of the event. Specifically, I want to thank the Parks Department and the Public Works Department for all of their assistance in putting the event on. The police and fire departments also were there to assist us as well. We genuinely appreciate their help at making it such a successful event. Not only did the River Discovery Center benefit from the festival, but festival by raising money to further our educational programs, but the entire community was able to enjoy a beautiful day on the riverfront watching the races. And we were so, so excited that all the downtown local restaurants were overflowing with business, too. We really had no idea what to expect when we began organizing the races. We were able to partner with Twenty-Two Dragons, a producer of dragon boat races out of Montreal, Canada, uh, and their expertise and professionalism showed throughout the entire week. The day went off without a hitch. Well, not counting the two cap sizes we had. But with the assistance of Ingram Barge, the Coast Guard, and the McCracken County DES and Sheriff's Rescue Squads, those were of little consequence to the success of the day. And we were amazed at the number of people that came out just to watch the boats being unloaded and put into the river early in the week, and so many people came out to watch the teams practice. Companies are already strategizing how they can improve their times for next year, and several have even expressed interest in purchasing their own dragon boats. We have already had a lot of interest from companies wanting to participate next year who did not have teams this year. We hope we don't have to turn away anyone and are expanding the field by ten teams for a total of thirty-six teams in order to accommodate the growing interest. We also want to announce that we have secured a date for next year's festival on September twenty-first. We look forward to again hosting what will be a new annual festival for Paducah.
Well, Julie, I just want to say that I, I had to be out of town that weekend, but I have heard more compliments about what a fun day it was with the people that were either participating in the race or the people that were just down there to watch it. And, um, and so it accomplished a lot. It, it made money for the museum. It brought people downtown, which we want, and, uh, so I just want to congratulate you on a wonderful, um, chair, not, it's not a charity, but it's a fundraiser for the river heritage, and, um, I hope you're very successful next year and in the years to come.
Well, thank you. We plan on it.
Any other questions?
What was the estimated crowd that day? Do you know? Do you have, get any guess?
Well, we really don't, because people come on and off. Just, uh, the teams represented were about five hundred and seventy-five people alone. So that didn't count all the support that each of those teams brought, and then just general members of the community and, and the area that came in. Um, one thing that's sort of interesting about this sport is, um, they actually refer to it as a tourism event, and, uh, 'cause eventually, actually Twenty-Two Dragons referred to it like the tourism, people say, heads-in-beds type of event, because teams end up coming from out of town and, of course, then contribute to, um, the hotel and restaurant business, um, for these types of events. So they can take on a life of their own, um, but I don't have an exact number, uh, about how many. We're gonna, we, we sort of estimate between twenty-five hundred and three thousand.
Wow, that's great.
Well, we were, we were down there, and first of all, the, the day was absolutely gorgeous. There wasn't a cloud in the sky.
We got lucky.
Uh, yeah, yeah, with outdoor vent, you always, uh, you know, keep an eye to the sky. But the energy on the, on the riverfront was, was amazing, and, uh, uh, and I talked to some of the, uh, business owners downtown. I mean, everybody was just about out of product. I mean, it was, it was, it was a great, it was a great day, and, uh, for the first, for the first annual one, uh, I don't think anybody really thought it would, it would, it would come off like that. But, uh, you're right, the support that the, the teams brought, uh, there were people coming and going, um, pretty much all morning, but it, it was a great event, and, uh, folks are excited about the next one, so.
Mm-hmm.
Good you got that date secured.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great day.
It, it really was huge for downtown businesses, and I'll have to say it was the most fun I've had since I soloed out at, out at Barclay Airport. I mean, it was a blast.
Well, I, I loved how a lot of people came off the boats. Obviously, most people had never done this before, and so many people just sort of rolled their eyes, like, what have I got myself into, and why am I doing this? I really don't want to. And then they got off the boats, and they said that was the most fun I've had in years. So, um, it was, it was a great feeling, and, and, um, we're really excited that, uh, we have something fun, and especially for our riverfront.
Yeah. Well, congratulations to the museum and to your board and, uh, your whole organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Three great reports. Um, moving on, Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the reading of the minutes for October twenty-third, October twenty-ninth, and November fifth, twenty-twelve, city commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Okay, questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Uh, we got motions, uh, Commissioner?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Uh, certificates of insurance, Buffalo Construction Company, Danny Copan Sons, uh, Grief Constructions, certificate of insurance of right-of-way bond, uh, Begets Concrete, Hefflin Incorporated, Paducah Transit Authority Encroachment Agreement, bulk ice controlled rock and salt fiscal year twenty thirteen, deed of conveyance to Schroeder Publishing Company for Paducah Waterworks property on Kentucky, on Kentucky Dam Road, Transit Authority of the City of Paducah Financial Statement for fiscal, for year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twelve, Paducah Waterworks Financial Highlights for September twenty-twelve, petition against the tent city mission being located at nineteen oh one Bridge Street, bids engineering, public works, solid waste division, uh, front-load refuge collection truck, McBride Mac and Stringfella, Inc.
Okay, uh...
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaler seconded. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Municipal orders, Commissioner Kaler?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Okay, Cindy, uh, anything significant here?
I don't have anything additional to contribute. Would like to point out, we do have a retirement from Tim Jones in the fire department. He served over twenty-two years for us.
Okay. Any comments that you'd like to give, uh, Jeff, on this, or?
I, I don't have any comments in addition to Cindy's.
Any question for Cindy? Okay, um, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending the schedule of fees and charges for solid waste pickup pursuant to the Solid Waste Ordinance, Chapter Ninety-four Solid Waste of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Rick?
Mayor Commission, uh, we're going, the engineering public works department, uh, at a future date is going to come with a total comprehensive, um, uh, reworking of the, uh, uh, solid waste ordinances. What we're bringing tonight is specific to the compost yard to make some changes that we need to make out there. Uh, most recently, a, a local businessperson stopped, uh, receiving, um, I guess, bulk brush on a, on a, uh, free basis, and as a result of that, uh, we, we were also receiving it on a free basis as well, and we've become overwhelmed, uh, with brush out there that we need to grind. To date, we've ground, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars' worth of brush into the, I guess, the mulch material that we mix with the, uh, sludge coming off the treatment plant to make the compost. We're full again, and so, uh, we're going to have to start cha- uh, charging a nominal fee, and if you look on the second page, I believe, of your packet, you'll see the old fees, uh, above there, where, uh, your regular vehicles and your dump large vehicles, they were tw- anywhere from twenty to twenty-five dollars, and your large vehicles were anywhere from sev- uh, twenty-five to seventy dollars. Well, you'll see that the fees that we're, uh, putting before you this evening are for a pickup truck, a small trailer is for five dollars, a, a larger trailer and single-axle dump truck would be ten dollars, a double-axle and triple-axle dump truck would be twenty-five dollars, and twenty cubic yards and over would be fifty dollars. We feel like this is necessary, uh, in order that we can maintain, I guess, the viability of the compost yard, but we no longer can receive this material free and then grind it at the cost that we have to grind it at. We are the only, we are the only people or, or the only agency in the region that is accepting these materials.
Okay, uh, any questions for Rick? Uh, I think it's a very, um, uh, I think it's the right thing to do, so, um, uh, if there are no further questions, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Thank you, Rick. Uh, ordinances and adoptions, these are, um, ordinances that we have talked about in the past, so I normally go through these fairly quickly. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky declaring support and authorizing certain actions to enable GPEDC Incorporated doing business under the assumed name of the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council Incorporated to partner with TeleTech Services Corporation for the development and locates, location of a general and administrative offices for consumer care center within the boundaries of the City of Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and further authorizes to execute, the execution of various documents related thereto. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah declares support for the authorizing and authorizing, uh, certain actions to enable GPEDC Incorporated doing business under the assumed name of the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council Incorporated, a Kentucky non-for-profit corporation, GPEDC, to partner with TeleTech Services Corporation, uh, to develop and locate general and administrative offices for consumer care centers in the certain planned office park called the Paducah Commerce Park located on McCracken Boulevard, the Commerce Park property, and in a second location currently referred to as a commerce center located at four oh one Kentucky Avenue, Paducah, Kentucky, four two zero zero three. The Commerce Center property, all within the boundaries of Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, together the project, which cooperative mutual endeavor has been evidenced by a certain memorandum of understanding dated November first, twenty-twelve, the MOU, and entered into by and between GPEDC and TeleTech. Further, this ordinance authorizes the transferance of the Commerce Center property to GEPDC for one dollar and to allocate up to one-point-three-five million to the project to assist GPEDC and its commitment to provide investment funds for the construction of and renovation of the customer care center on Commerce Park property and the Commerce Center property, respectively.
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. City Manager, any comments?
Well, uh, just like to make point that the building construction of which the city is going to contribute one-point-three-five million with a similar amount from the county and also a contribution from GPEDC, our intent would be to sell bonds to accumulate our, uh, cash for that contribution. The, uh, job creation that's projected and committed to by this company, um, will generate a sufficient enough revenue stream through our two percent payroll tax to finance the annual bond payments, uh, over the expected fifteen-year life of the bond. Uh, there's also a fallback provision, because the city and county will retain ownership of that building, that, uh, if, uh, the job creation does not materialize at the projected level, uh, or at some level below that, then the company would begin to make, uh, lease payments at market-based lease rates. Uh, if that were to be the case, then that money would also be available to service the debt from the building construction.
Any question for the city manager? Um, would, have they given any indication when they will start on the building at the information, any part?
I've not heard anything, uh, in the last week or so, no.
Yeah. I think they want to start on the Commerce Building just as soon as they can, so...
Yeah, there's some other, uh, agreements, arrangements between them and, and GPEDC that need to be finalized, but I would expect that it would move pretty quickly once those agreements are in place.
Yeah. Uh, so we have some, you know, it looks like we have some time to get our financing.
Well, and, uh, our intention would be to, um, roll that into a larger, larger bond issue, uh, we hope to bring before you, uh, next Tuesday night, a contract for the swimming pool renovation, which has been a, a bit of a, uh, task to, to get that thing, uh, in, in position to let a contract, but hopefully we'll have that before you next week, uh, and, uh, assuming so, then it'll be necessary to, uh, include funding for that project in a bond issue, something in the neighborhood of a million dollars there as well. Uh, so we would be packaging a bond presumably to sell some- dollars there as well. So we would be packaging a bond presumably to sell sometime after the first of the year, taking advantage of what I would guess will still be historically low interest rates.
Yeah. It's an excellent time to float a bond, if you have to say. Any questions for the City Manager? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a revolving line of credit from Banteria Bank in the principal amount not to exceed $900,000, authorizing the mayor to execute the revolving line of credit agreement and other loan documents relating thereto, and authorizing a designated agent to draw funds from the revolving line of credit, all of which is necessary to finance a portion of the city's postponed construction costs, proposed, I'm sorry, construction costs in the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. By this ordinance, the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizes and approves a revolving line of credit from Banteria Bank in the principal amount not to exceed $900,000 for a term of 18 months with interest their own at the fixed rate of 2.95% premium per annual, subject to commercially reasonable terms and conditions. The funds drawn from the revolving line of credit shall be utilized to finance a portion of the city's construction costs incurred in the furtherance of its commitments to construct seven new structures within the Fountain Avenue neighborhood. Further, the city authorizes and directs the Finance Director of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to request an efficient draw, an efficient draw upon the revolving line of credit as deemed necessary by the City Planning Department to satisfy construction costs incurred by the city in the furtherance of its commitments.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Steve on that? So Steve, the grant plus the line of credit allows the city to build the homes and as you sell the homes, then you can pay down on the line of credit?
The line of credit will be used to actually construct the seven new homes. We'll be getting the grant funds that will buy down the actual construction cost for the new homeowner, so the new homeowner will have to get a mortgage to pay off the construction loan plus the incurred interest.
Okay, so how many, how many new family structures will you be building at the same time?
As part of this program, seven, but another part of this program is that the buyers have to be pre-qualified from a bank, so before we even start construction, we have to have somebody that's pre-qualified at the state level as well as through a bank, and we have three persons that are pre-qualified now. We actually had a bid opening last Tuesday, so we'll be moving ahead quickly on those first.
Wonderful, wonderful. Any other questions for Steve? Good job on this, Steve. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting a 2012 Community Police Partnership Neighborhood Revitalization Award in partnership with Midtown Alliance of Neighbors from the MetLife Foundation and the Local Initiative Support Corporation, LISC, for the Paducah Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah, in partnership with the Midtown Alliance of Neighbors, hereby accepts a 2012 MetLife Foundation Community Police Partnership Neighborhood Revitalization Award in the amount of $20,000 to be used by the Paducah Police Department for community policing in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood. A local match is not required.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that? Pretty self-explanatory. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting a grant award from Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway, BNSF Foundation, for providing a youth police academy sponsored by the Paducah Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby accepts a grant award in the amount of $2,500 from Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway, BNSF Foundation, to assist the Paducah Police Department in providing a youth police academy twice a year to area youth ages 13 to 17. The award does not require any local matching funds.
Second. All right, and how many are in the, any class? Oh, Chief, you're here. What's the number in each class? Does it say? Did I miss that?
We take approximately 20 students.
20 students. Okay, and so how many does this 2,500 allow you to?
It'll allow us to conduct two classes next calendar year.
Right.
The committee met actually today at 2:00, and I think they're going to set a class the second week of June, as soon as school gets out.
Okay, any questions for Chief Grimes?
Have you had any interest in, from aspiring potential future police officers from this academy?
Actually, we have, and I've been conversing with one of the local pastors as well. His son enrolled in the class last year and is going to EKU for criminal justice.
Good, good.
That's where it starts.
Absolutely.
Great. Good work on this, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Ordinances and Introductions, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac Sales Incorporated for sale to the City of one new 2014 front-loading refuge collection truck for use by the solid waste collection system, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of McBride Mac Sales Incorporated in the amount of $223,696.19 for the sale to the City of one new 2014 front-loading refuge collection truck for use specifications, and as contained in the bid of McBride Mac Sales Incorporated of October 23rd, 2012. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute a contract with McBride Mac Sales Incorporated for said purchase of truck.
All right, second that. Any, any comments? Pretty self-explanatory, isn't it?
Pretty much. It's, we'll fulfill our fleet requirements for this year. Within the solid waste department, we have two fire trucks left on the fleet purchase plan for this year, but I would, I would state that the budgeted amount was $245,000 for that truck, and it's just north of $223,000, so we're right where we should be.
Any questions for Rick? Okay, good job. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a strategic health risk advisory and strategic benefit placement services contract with Peel and Holland Financial Group to provide administration services for the City of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Peel and Holland Financial Group in the amount of $65,000 payable in four equal installments of $16,250 each for services pertaining to the administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or city legal counsel. The contract is for 2013 calendar year.
Second.
So this is just an extension of what we've been doing in past years?
Yes, sir. It's flat to last year. We've had this partnership for some time. We meet monthly with Mr. Carlton. He reviews with us. He takes care of the actuarial analysis. He's very familiar with our claims. It allows us to negotiate our contracts better with our service providers, and he helps us stay ahead of healthcare reform, keep our grandfather status, structure our plans so that we can stay ahead of all of those reform issues.
I think Greg has been doing this for the city even back when Albert was mayor, maybe?
I believe it was 1999.
Yeah, that's when he started. Any questions for Cindy?
Did you second that one?
I did. Okay, Cindy, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, Commissioner Watkins, do you have this one?
Yes. I move, excuse me, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah accepting a 2012 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant Award for the Paducah Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $37,000 through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for a 2012 reimbursable grant award to purchase up to 14 handheld radios to be used by the Paducah Police Department. This award does not require a local cash match or any kind contribution. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security.
Okay, I'll second that. Pretty self-explanatory, right, Chief?
Yes, this is the second year we've received grant funding from Homeland Security to purchase radios. Last year, we received $60,000, $37,000 this year. State funding was actually cut in half, so we're content with this money.
Okay. Any questions for Assistant Chief Grimes? All right, thank you. All right, that gets us to the City Manager's report.
How much time do I have?
As much as you want.
Well, not past 7:30. Okay, I alluded to the swimming pool contract earlier. Our plans are at present to proceed with the meeting next Tuesday night. I think there's indications that perhaps one member of the body will not, here we realize there's a holiday following, so if your plans are going to have you away on that evening, please let us know. Otherwise, we hope to have the swimming pool contract ready to act on next Tuesday night. As you know, the initial bidding for that did not produce a contract that we could award. We went at it a second time, did a little scaling back, and unfortunately we had only one bidder, and while most of the bid items were reasonable, there were some associated with the water feature that were inordinately high, and so our strategy was to simply cut the water feature out of that contract and take out those line items that caused it to be higher than what we think it should be and what we want to pay for that, and offer a contract up to the bidder without that in it, but with everything else in it. So that is, or will be, in the bidder's hands either today or tomorrow, and hopefully they'll sign off on it. If they do, then we're going to have to accomplish the water feature, which is essentially the demolition of the waiting pool and replacement with a kind of modern water feature on our own. It might be an opportunity to save some money with a little bit of the demolition, but contracting out for the mechanical side of that. I might mention the other component of that project is the rehabilitation of the concession facility. That is out for bid right now, and hopefully we'll encounter a more favorable bid climate on that than we have the rest of the project, but it's a really necessary project. I applaud the commission for supporting it to this point, and it's an asset that's worth preserving, well utilized in the community, and I think we're fortunate that we have a public that's reasonably content with that facility. They just wanted and needed to be modernized. We don't have a clamoring for a major investment in an aquatics park or something like that, which have been around now for 10 or 15 years in many other cities, so hopefully we'll have some good luck and contract before you next Tuesday night. Last Friday, the Fire Prevention Division hosted a workshop for electrical contractors and inspectors, a proactive move by the reorganized department to reach out to their colleagues and those that they work with, and provide an educational, in fact, a certification opportunity for people that work in one of the primary areas that they are associated with. There were approximately 120 registered attendees from around the area, electrical inspectors from neighboring cities, which is very gratifying. The cost of the workshop, it was a whole day thing, was covered entirely by contributions that came from solicitations by the department. It was a very admirable thing as well, shows confidence, I think, in our department and support for it, so it was a resounding success, and the intention would be to host additional workshops in other areas going forward, so kudos to the department for that and all other departments that supported it. Tomorrow, I'll be traveling to Frankfurt to a luncheon of the Kentucky State Park and Rec Association where, this is not a secret to Mark Thompson, so our, Mark Thompson will be named the Kentucky State Parks and Rec Director of the Year, so there will be others attending as well that work for some people to go, others not. I know the whole city organization applauds Mark for this and is behind him. On Friday, I'll be in Elizabeth Town to attend a legislative meeting of the second-class cities in Kentucky where Representative Watkins, the top three issues will be pension reform, pension reform, and pension reform, as you know, so we'll talk about that. While in Elizabeth Town, I'm going to take the opportunity to look at what a $30 million sports complex that can be funded by the restaurant tax in a third-class city that statutorily has the authority to have one of those in Kentucky, whereas second-class cities don't, so sure like to see that issue progress, and I know the city and associated agencies locally have been pushing that for a year, but what a, what a heck of a facility exists there. I haven't been there, but I've seen some video of it, and hopefully I'll have a decent day to walk around there on Friday. Kind of following up on some comments the mayor made a little while ago post-merger, I think that with, with that issue having come and presumably gone, at least for a while, we have some opportunities to perhaps pick up on some things and touch bases with our citizenry and provide some information, maybe some assurances for some things that might have been in question. It would be my intention to engage the county over the next few months in a discussion about ongoing opportunities for both local governments and perhaps other overlapping jurisdictions to search out and consider opportunities for cooperation, collaboration, and potentially consolidation in local government, and the way to approach that initially, I think, is to engage one another or other units of government, if it's appropriate, in an inventory of all the things that we do now cooperatively, collaboratively, and where we've done consolidations, and there are a number of things, and produce that inventory and share that with the public so that the public can perhaps better understand and appreciate where local governments have found or seized the opportunities to come together, but more than that, I think, develop as strong of an ethic going forward as we can to be about the three Cs, look for those opportunities where it makes sense to do those kind of things, and kind of endeavor to be open-minded to those. This process could even kick up in a more formal sense where we might impanel a committee of sorts to sort of study it in an ongoing way and make recommendations, so I'd like to see that kind of thing part of our posture, our joint posture with the county going forward, and I'll have conversations with folks in county government about that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good comments. The ironic thing about Elizabeth Town is that they're really larger than we are, but they have kept their third-class designation, and because they kept their third-class designation, they can have a restaurant tax, so they're going to, I believe, just on this restaurant tax, they're going to bring in $3 million a year, which will fund a bond to build this sports complex. So we're missing the boat on a technicality, Gerald, basically.
How far, we don't want, of course, we're trying to bring as many people into Paducah, and we've done a lot of things toward that that make Paducah an attractive place to live.
and we've done a lot of things toward that that make Paducah an attractive place to live. Uh, but how far above the threshold are we into, from the third to a second-class city?
Well, actually, uh, I think, I think second-class cities are from 20,000 to 50,000 population, maybe.
That's my understanding, so we'd be well into it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we've been a second-class city for quite a while.
Wouldn't need legislation, legislative.
No, uh, yes, you can.
I mean, to be able to.
You don't have to, you don't have to move up every time your population goes up, and several cities have chosen not to do that.
Hmm.
You know, really, there's only a pride factor, uh, that would make you want to move up, um.
Surely, we're past that, right?
Yeah, we're past that, um.
Well, my, my point, I think, you know, we talked about a, a sports complex and, and a complex not quite on that scale, but still of some scale, came out of a planning session of this city commission less than three years ago, but what, uh, had not been identified to date was a, a viable means to finance it, and, and the difference with what Elizabeth Town had is that they had a dedicated special revenue source for that and did not have to find the means or carve that out of their general obligation bond, um, capacity, or their capacity more especially of the city to finance the bonds out of general property taxation that's already there, um, servicing multiple other needs of the city, and, and the ability to raise property taxes to service a $30 million bond for a recreational asset is forget it. It's just not happening. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna work here or anywhere else. But in the case of Elizabeth Town having, having that dedicated revenue source for, uh, specific recreational leisure purposes or allowable within the, uh, limits of the statute for that, they were able to take a revenue source that was not otherwise obligated and could not be obligated broadly throughout their budget and plug it in and, and get that asset built that way. And without that, in this day and age, with, with revenues, uh, constraints that we operate under, it, it just, you know, I don't, I don't know how, something like that could happen, so.
Apparently attractive to, uh, potential employers because they're really growing and.
Yeah. Well, Elizabeth Town is, is like we are. They're, they're on, what, Interstate 65 or 64?
Hmm.
So they have lots of restaurants, like we have lots of restaurants here out on our interstate. So, uh, that, that's gonna create quite a bit of revenue. Now, the other thing was, they talked about how the restaurants were gonna fight it because they didn't want this extra tax. They'd have to raise their prices. But I haven't heard anybody up in Elizabeth Town, any restaurant franchise that has been fighting that tax. So apparently, uh, there must be enough of them that feel the benefits of what they're doing, and they're just not gonna, they're not gonna fight it. So, um, uh, I, I take my hat off. Uh, there's a new mayor in Elizabeth Town, and, um, they, they've really been able to do this for a number of years, but the old administration didn't wanna, didn't wanna do that restaurant tax, but the new one has decided that that's what they want to do, and, um, I commend them for it.
Yeah, I want to hear about this $30 million complex when you get back, see what all they have to offer us.
Yeah.
Well, I, I've, I've seen some video, and I, I would say it's, uh, far in excess of anything that I've ever, uh, seen before in, in terms of maybe even being a little more extravagant than maybe what it would need to be, but the, the point is, um, on the scale that they built that, and it's baseball, softball, soccer, kind of similar to what we were talking about, uh, they probably couldn't do it and do it right for under 22, 24, 25 million dollars. If they were able to embellish it a little bit more and put some additional accoutrements in there because they had the revenue, then I guess all the better for them, but the, the point is, it, it takes a certain amount of money to do it and do it right and meet the needs and expectations of the local public, but also to the extent that a city is interested in, uh, attracting, um, people from out of town to come in, um, it, it takes, you know, a, a, a good facility to, to compete with others.
Well, and you look at a, 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 a 1% tax on a $50 meal, you're talking about 50 cents more in your food cost. 2% would obviously be a dollar. So, um, so what they're gonna get for the amount of cost is, is significant. Okay, uh, any Commissioner comments?
I just want to, um, um, talk about the, the merger and it's, and how it turned out, and I think if you, if those folks, uh, whichever way they voted, I think the mandate was that, okay, we, we don't want to merge city and county government, but if you paid attention to the dialogue, um, during the whole process, is, it was that, uh, we do work together, you know? We, we want, we want our county to, to move forward, and any opportunities that present itself for us to do that, we're gonna do it. Well, we're kinda, that's, that's pretty much where we are, and I think we really have to make sure that we're doing that and not, uh, you know, there's some kind of retreat back or the perception that we're not doing that at all, because that, that was, that was, uh, was marketed in the comments. And so we need to make sure that, uh, uh, we hold ourselves accountable for that. Uh, and I think what you're, what you're suggesting, City Manager, is, is, is right on time. Let's, let's look for those opportunities to work together, uh, to bring more jobs into the county, uh, and, uh, I don't think there would be any, um, uh, reverb on the fact, you know, when you announce you got 450 jobs, that's in the county, that's in the city, that's, that's great. Everybody's like, okay, let's do that again, but it's gonna take cooperation, uh, working some details out, but sitting down at the table and expecting, uh, to be successful and working those things through. So, uh, uh, we kinda, uh, yeah, the vote came out the way it did, but in a, in a different light, you look at that and you're like, okay, uh, we've sent the statement that we're gonna work together, and we're, we don't have to merge governments to be successful and economic developed, really? Okay, let's, let's see how that works. So I, I'm excited to see with the new commission and with the fiscal court how we can continue to work and, uh, and bring, uh, jobs here, be it manufacturing, college, and it's whatever, uh, uh, to follow through on that.
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate what you said, and, and I, I have not seen this level of cooperation between local government and economic development any place I've been before. I mean, even in the short time that I've been here, between Murray State and the city and the county, uh, each obligating themselves to approximately $5 million, and, and then this one, another, uh, 1.35 plus. It's, it speaks of a strong, common, uh, resolve to, to get things done and, and make it happen, and, and there's a strong collaborative effort there in place, and, uh, uh, something that a lot of jurisdictions would like to be able to emulate, but because of political reasons or whatever, probably can't. So we're very, very, very fortunate to have that here.
I think the, um, merger supporters felt like if they criticized the city and they criticized the county enough, that you would have the sport that that's a dysfunctional organization, so you need to do merger, uh, in order to be successful. So consequently, I think what has happened is you've got, the county had their feelings hurt in a lot of cases, the city has had their feelings hurt. There were a lot of things said that were quite frankly not true. They were, they were not true. So, uh, there's a lot of hurt feelings, and then you hear this group say, well, we're gonna keep, we're gonna bring it back up, uh, we're gonna keep it in the forefront of the public. Well, look, a 70, 30% vote, what, what about that do you not understand?
Yeah.
So we have got to run our city, county's gotta run the county, we do cooperate on an awful lot of, uh, things, we will continue to do that, we can improve on that, and the City Manager's right on as far as talking to the judge and, and the deputy, uh, judge, and, uh, we've got a real, we've got two successful entities out there, one in JSA that is doing a great job as a merged, uh, area, and the other is the City-County Library, which is probably one of the top libraries in the state because we get revenue from the city and the county. So, um, uh, we just need to move on, we need to put our differences behind us and, and, and move forward. And I think enough people saying that enough times, then, uh, hopefully, that will happen.
Yeah, well said by all three of you, and I think you're 100% correct, and, and you're a correct, uh, mayor, that, uh, I think to continue to bring that up again is, is a, a waste of capital, money, time, effort, uh, energy, when it could be better spent doing something else. It's not, didn't pass, not going to pass. People are content, they like the way things are, but we have a very high level of cooperation, as the City Manager just pointed out, in all these different projects, and with Sandra and so many different people in the community working on the two-plus-two agreement with Murray State University and, and, uh, just these 450 jobs and just all the different things that are going on and, uh, in the works, uh, we have a very high level of cooperation and, with the county, and, uh, there's no problems in us getting along to accomplish , uh, common goals for this community, to make it a better place to live, to bring in employment opportunities and that, educational opportunities, and so it's, uh, you know, we move forward.
Any public comments? John Anderson, it's good to have you with us tonight. Thank you. Uh, that concludes our meeting. There will be no executive session, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.